Ladies and gentlemen.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Tonino City Council June 22nd work session. Tonight, we have Jim Gibson, and he's going to do a report on the parking lot behind the mini mall. You're on, Jim.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here. Wanted to give you a quick report of how the progress we're making on the parking lot, kind of the layout of it. Some of you may have seen it being shared by Troy, Public Works Director or the Mayor, but if you go ahead and make me the presenter, I can present my screen, and I can walk you through what we have so far. Can you guys see the screen now?
Yes, I can see it.
All right, thank you. So when the chamber first touched base with me, the plan was to wanted to pave the parking lot and fix some of the drainage issues, the potholes, and make it usable for the community. So I sat down with Troy, the Public Works Director, and we went out there and walked the site and looked at what we had existing and what we could utilize from the existing and what we would need to rebuild. So what we determined was, are you able to see my pointer at all on the screen? Yeah, there we go. So I'm going to use it to point around here if you guys can see it okay. We have an existing sidewalk that comes all the way down central around the corner up Howard Street. That's going to be the limits of our project. We have existing entrances in the sidewalk right here. Another one right here. We have one here and one down here. We're going to utilize three of those. These three here would be utilized. This one would not be. So based on those, we laid out, you can see the structure of the parking. We created lines of parking here, here, and here, and then one down that would nose into the building at this edge. You'll see here, we're keeping an opening here so they can get access to the building. There's a garage door right there. The blue line is the limits of paving also. So the intent is to pave the alley and then come up and pave this area. Looking at that, we have 25 stalls being proposed on this design. So what we have is a drive lane. You drive down through here. You need to go down the alley, or you can turn right and come through, turn right, come this way, or vice versa, either direction with access to here. Each drive lane is 23 feet, minimum 23 feet wide. Each parking stall is nine feet by 20 feet. And these islands at the end, they can either be paved through and striped, so we have less cars for impact, or we can leave those open and make planters out of them, put trees and bushes and such in there. At this point, we haven't talked landscaping. It was all about getting the hard improvements done, and then those can be decided upon at a later time. This is the entrance right here to the back of the Sandstone Mall. So we're going to create an ADA path that comes out of there, and these two stalls, this one here and this one here would be ADA designed. So that means there can't be any slopes greater than 2% in any direction here. So we'll have a 2% slope coming out, and then these two would be handicap accessible. Then we'd still be able to walk through this area here and access this part of the parking lot for pedestrians. You see these areas here, here, and along this edge here? Those are going to be stormwater swales. So if you've been out there, you know this is the high end of the project up here. Everything drains in this direction. So we're going to intercept the water up here with these two drainage. They look like little ditches. If you've been out to the Tonino School District parking lot at the stadium, you'll see some V ditches in between that intercepts stormwater. We're doing the same concept here. So these are about 18 inches deep. They're sloped at three to one down to the bottom and then back up. And then this area here is also sloped this direction. So this one down here is in the bottom. And then this water here will be drawn down and into this side here. That's the drainage design here. That's the parking lot. Troy has, we talked about how do we want to keep pedestrians or cars out of these little swales here? And the intent is to put a four-foot black chain link fence around them. So basically, when you pull your car in here, you'll see the chain link fence along these edges here and around to keep pedestrians and other folks out of that. Questions?
It all looks pretty good to me, Jim. I just, there's quite a pathway though between the telephone building where the cars are nosed in and the other one. How wide is that strip?
Right here?
Yeah, no, over.
Ducking here?
No, over in the, oh, right there, right there.
Right here.
Yeah.
20 feet.
Okay, okay.
Essentially, two 10-foot drive lanes is what we're looking at there.
And it's your opinion that that will take care of the storm? Can you hear me? That'll take care of the storm, the storm drains will take care of that runoff from the buildings, right?
Well, will you say runoff from this building here?
No, 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 from the back of the sandstone.
Oh, yes. This has been sized based on the amount of asphalt we're putting out there to accommodate for that. I have a stormwater report that'll be part of the design.
Well, this is very, very exciting, I think. Anyway, that's my opinion. We've wanted this for, let's, a year and a half. The chamber started talking about this project about a year and a half ago, and with the city involved, it looks like it's going to happen, and we're very, very pleased with that.
Yeah, I'm happy to work on it. I'm glad the chamber reached out to me, and I like to work on projects locally, so this is kind of fun.
That's good. Anybody else have questions for Jim?
No, I'm just going to say it'll be nice because I deliver to the Sandstone Cafe, and I always try to have to avoid those potholes, so it'll be a smooth ride going in there from here on out. Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, I know Troy is working, you know, Mayor Fournier and Troy is working on how this is going to get constructed. I don't have a lot of details on that yet. I have heard about volunteer labor with some other cities' forces. I just don't have that information at this point.
I just got on you guys, sorry. I'm here. This is Troy.
Oh, hi Troy.
Hi. So yeah, we kind of, I'm talking to Wayne and some other people about postponing that till after Oregon Trail Days because we don't want that parking lot tore up during Oregon Trail Days. So soon as Oregon Trail Days is over, we plan on getting started on the stormwater and grading of that parking lot.
So Troy, in my presentation, did I miss anything that we talked about?
I just, I'm sorry, Jim. I got on here a little late. I had to race home and get on, so I'm sorry if I missed anything, but I just added in my little two cents.
That's okay. Just, we just talked about how the stormwater would work, and it's been sized to handle the runoff from this area. And we're addressing some runoff from the Tonino Telephone Building in that wide area next to it.
Correct. Yeah, we'll do a little drain through there for his down spot drain, so keeps it off the asphalt.
It's my understanding that we have American Rescue Funds coming, and that there's a possibility they could be used for this, and that would be wonderful if we could get this done this summer, even though we have to wait until after Oregon Trail Days. It's going to mean a lot to the businesses in downtown Tonino.
Yes, correct. Yep.
Does anybody else have questions for Jim or Troy? Okay, well, thank you, guys.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, next, we have a discussion on the pump track update, and I'm wondering if.
Yeah, so Linda, I have some information on that because I asked the mayor at the last meeting if he could send out, give me some information on the pump track. And if anybody doesn't know what a pump track is, I would just tell you to Google Leavenworth Pump Track because they have a really cool one, and this is, ours is going to be just as cool as that, so I would definitely get on YouTube and check that out. But basically, we're going to go with, hopefully with 413 footage of this pump track, and it'll cost somewhere around just under $79,000. And with the ARP money that's coming in, I'm very confident that we can get this done. And not just for us, but for the youth of Tonino and everyone else that can go out there and use it because if this pandemic was to happen again in the future, it would be nice for the youth to go outside and not be bored and have a place to go to to use something like this. So get their exercise, get their mental strength up, and it'd be very, very useful for them. So I'm hoping we can get this done here very, very soon.
Anybody have any questions for Jason?
I don't have any questions, but I'm really excited about this. I think it's going to be a lot of fun for the kids here.
I think that there's a, I think that on, if you scroll down, it shows estimates on how much it would cost.
Yeah, it does. And the colors on it are going to be red and black.
Well, of course.
Be just the Tonino High School theme too, so.
If you want to see one of these, go downtown Olympia by the fountain. I don't know if they have it up yet, but for the last few years, they've been putting this out.
And Jason, it just clicks together, doesn't it? Isn't it like one big Lego piece?
Yeah, it's like putting a Lego set together. Connects.
Yeah, that's going to be cool.
Yeah, and it's very, once you ride on it with your bike, it's like you barely have to pedal. So you just do your move with your body, and it'll just, should just take you right around the track with you. So that'd be a good exercise. And it's for all ages, not just teenagers, but for anyone can go out there and use it.
Anybody else have anything to say about it? Okay, well, thanks, Jason. Well, it looks like we've got about 17 minutes. George, do you have a report for us? Could you give your report for the Chamber or the Economic Development?
Hey, everybody. We had a great Chamber Commerce meeting last week with Joe Belmonte and the new Superintendent Clint Endicott attending, and then some reports from Tonino Young Theatre where they announced what they're working on and that they were going to have a sign unveiling, which they ended up having a sign unveiling on Friday of last week right after our study meeting. And our next meeting will be July 21st, and that meeting will be an Oregon Trails update, and they will also hear from the Food Bank of what's the update on what they have going. That's my chamber report. Study, again, we had a great meeting on study last Friday. Thanks for Councilmember O'Callaghan and Linda Fotivak for attending that. The mayor also attended. We had 25 people attend from throughout Thurston County. A lot of our partners are in attendance as well. And that's when we actually afterwards walked over to what's called Bountiful Marketplace and More, which is the building between the Landmark Tavern and the Eagles. And we did a brief overview of what that looks like and what's going to be happening there. We're planning to do a soft opening on July 8th for Bountiful, and then after the chamber meeting on the 21st, we'll do a ribbon cutting and have a grand opening celebration the week of Oregon Trail Days. That's my report, Linda.
Thank you, George. How about Fire District? Do you have a report, John?
This is fire season, and some of our guys had to go down, I believe it was Arizona, to help down there. They got called up for that. We got one of the new trucks coming in. When you see the new truck, there was a question on where that money's coming from. It's coming from Wildland. What ended up happening is the last time we went out on Wildland fires, our truck got burned up. So a lot of this stuff that you're seeing, the insurance money that comes from Wildland, whatever they pay us to go down there. So none of it's, the money comes in, it goes into the general account, and then comes right back out to pay for the new equipment that needed to be replaced. We're still looking to hire a couple of people for full-time and a couple of just summertime people, and everything else is just moving ahead slowly. We also had a presentation from the chief at the chamber meeting about, a short presentation about the new fire station that's being proposed and the tax that we're asking for. That's it.
Thanks, John. Aslan, I see you're here. Have you got anything to report?
Oh, sure. And it's just great to hear everything that's already gone on. I don't know how much I knew about the pump track, and obviously, it's great to see the parking lot moving forward and having Jim Gibson here and even the Fire District. I mean, it's all good stuff, and I will certainly, man, that study meeting on Friday morning, I didn't make it to the chamber. I was working on a grant, but man, the study meeting was out of this world. It was the quality and quantity of people, the participation, the sharing of stories of what's going on in South County, the spirit of unity across South County. Anyways, it's very exciting what's happening. And Tonino does seem to be the center of it, so just saying. As far as the Ag Park goes, it was a big week for the Ag Park, so the bond went out this week. And so, you know, their banks are reviewing it right now. They have until Thursday, two days from now, to get any questions in if they want more details from the city, which would be directed towards Becca, the City Clerk Treasurer. And, you know, then we have another week to provide any answers to questions from the banks, and then their proposals are in on July 8th, so they're due in. And so then we have a selection of proposals in from different banks. They'll offer the terms and the rates that they're going to propose, and then we will bring those to the City Council on the 13th of July. And so that, you know, that staff that is doing the bond, as well as your own staff in the EDC, will review. They may make some recommendations, but it will be up to the city on the 13th whether or not you, any of those seem like you would like to move forward. If we chose on the 13th to move forward, we could, they estimate that we could close the loan by July 21st, so literally just in time for Trail Days. So any questions about that process? All right. Also, at the same time this, last week, the EDC finished its paperwork to start to release the funds with the Department of Commerce. That contracting period takes about another four to six weeks, so basically around the same time, the EDC, if the city chose to move forward, the EDC and the city could be both receiving monies for the Ag Park at the end of July. So any questions there? All right, and then finally, we brought on Thomas Architectural Studios to manage the architecture and engineering portion of the process of the site development and building construction. That started last week. We had our first meeting today. They will launch all the civil geotech survey work as well as manage, you know, the new designs for the building and the site. And then, at some point, likely in the neighborhood of December, we would like that project management role to shift over as we move towards construction to Mr. Jim Gibson. I don't, we haven't finalized that. We haven't fully twisted his arm, but we are hoping that Jim will take over the project and manage the construction phase, which would start roughly in January.
Aslan, who was that? Your voice broke up, and I didn't understand who you were talking about.
Oh.
Somebody come in.
Yeah.
Oh, Jim. Oh.
Jim Gibson.
Yeah, great.
So, and then we do have one more interested tenant who's willing to sign a letter of commitment, and he happens to be a Tonino boy who currently owns a restaurant in Yelm and who has ran food processing businesses that have, you know, sold to his different markets as the Tacoma Food Co-op to Costco. And he makes a wide variety of salads and soups and sandwiches and salsas, and he sources like 100% local from local farms. So we would love to have them also at the Ag Park. They're exactly the kind of business we're looking for. See how I gave you all that information without saying any names. And so we are hoping to do another design charrette with our three tenants who are right now still ready to commit and design this first building for them. So it's getting exciting again. You know, it gets exciting, and then it feels like you're stuck in bureaucracy and everything's taking extra time, and then it gets exciting again. So right now, it's getting exciting again. All right, I took up at least three minutes.
Thank you. Yes, you did.
Thanks, Aslan.
Absolutely. Thanks, Jason.
Is Linda here from the library? No. How about Jody? Is Jody here? No. Well, I am still going up and down the street trying to get people to improve the front of their buildings. I'm still working on the person who owns the feed store to paint the front of the old hotel and do improvements on that. So that's the facade report. Museum. If any of you have not been to the museum, you need to go up there. It is just fantastic. Jessica Reeves-Rush has done a phenomenal job on that museum. Becca, you want to give your report now? Clerk Treasurer?
Sure, I can.
Sure.
I don't have a lot to report. We've just been working hard, moving forward with all the grants and trying to just get everything organized, figured out. I think we're making some progress. We've got a lot of things put together that weren't before and are kind of starting to send them off and get things approved, obviously, through you guys as well. So always busy, but we are making progress.
Thanks, Becca.
Yep.
How about TRCP? Zack Cutter?
All right, yeah. I have nothing new to report. We're having a retreat in two weeks, so that's exciting. And then we have our meeting next week as well.
Okay. How about TCOM 911? Nothing? Solid Waste Advisory Board?
We meet next week.
Okay. Well, if you want to take a little seven-minute break, that's fine. Yes.
Would you like to hear from the Police Department?
Oh, please. I'm sorry, John. Please.
I'll make this real quick, too. I also attended the chamber lunch. I was impressed with the turnout and the send-off that was given to Joe Belmonte and the welcome to Clint Endicott. Last week, I attended a couple-hour meeting with the chiefs in the county and the sheriff and the Washington State Patrol and the county prosecutor and all deputies of all these agencies down the road and their legal assistants as well, all surrounding the police reform legislation that takes place, takes effect July 25th of 2021. And it encompasses all use of force and tactics, police equipment and its restrictions, hiring incentives and hiring requirements, no-knock warrants, required intervention. If an officer observes another officer using what is perceived as excessive force, he or she must say something, must intervene, and must immediately report that as well to his supervisor. De-escalation training that is still ongoing, has been for years, and the TPD officers are all up to speed on that. Legislation surrounding pursuits when we will and when we won't, de-certification of law enforcement officers when they're getting spanked and they no longer get to carry a badge and have authority, which is putting real meat into that, which is good. And in about mid-July, early July, rather, we're having a training. The Lewis County Prosecuting Attorney, also a Tonino Police Reserve, Jonathan Meyer is going to train all of us officers, all of us, on the legal updates and what to watch for in pitfalls and scenarios and such. I attempted to contact the organizer of the concert during Oregon Trail Days to no avail. Haven't heard back from him. I understand from Tyler Whitworth, there's a meeting coming up the first week of July, and he should be in attendance there. For Chief, former Chief John Steins is finishing up the processing of a new reserve officer right now. We did traffic control for the Tonino High School graduation, and I attended Tonino Court. The Lance Club meeting is on Thursday, and I'll be in attendance at the Lance Club meeting on Thursday. And the overall budget so far, we are about mid, just over mid-June. We're about 40, 43% spent, so we're on track and on target there. And one of the highlights of the week was a chat I had, a nice visit with Councilmember Cutter Copeland, what he wanted to see in skills, knowledge, and traits of a new police chief for the city of Tonino. And that's my report. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, if you want the organizer's information, I can pass that to you.
That would be great. I appreciate that, Cutter. Thank you, sir.
That was a good report.
And I did it on time.
Thank you.
Next week.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
How about the school board? I know school's out. Do you have anything to report at all, Rachel?
I don't have a report for the district, but I did want to remind families that the Grab and Go Meal started yesterday, and they're going to continue through summer. And then they're going to go from 11:00 to 12:30 p.m. And it's going to be the Bucota Community Center is one, and then over at the Tonino Middle School is another pickup location, and then New Day Christian Church is going to have another pickup location. And it's going to continue through summer until school starts.
Thank you, Rachel. How about Be That, Jason?
There's no report.
Okay, thank you. We have three minutes. Let's take a little break, and we'll come back at 7:30. Whoops, now we have two minutes.
Thanks, Linda.
Thanks, Linda.
Okay, let me get back to my other screen. The consent calendar. Consent calendar consisting of June nine, twenty-twenty-one through June twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one. Payroll EFTs in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety cents. Claim checks, two-nine-nine-five-zero through two-nine-nine-eight-five and EFTs in the amount of one-hundred-and-six dollars, seven, one-hundred-and-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-two cents for a grand total of one-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. There were no liquor or cannabis.
I like that one figure of one-hundred-and-six dollars better, but.
Yeah, I did too, but you know, it made me change it. Do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the EFTs and vouchers as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. No executive set session, no presentations. That brings us to public comments period number one. If there's anyone in the audience that has a pu- public comment, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address. One more time. If there's anyone in the public that would like to make a comment, please state your name and address. You have three minutes. Okay, public hearing. The Shoreline Master Plan Hearing, we'd like to have moved to July thirteenth meeting. I'm need a motion.
A move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to move the, uh, master, uh, shoreline plan to the Ja- uh, July thirteenth meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So moved. Okay. New bit, um, no part proclamations and no old business, new business is the six-year street plan. Trey, are you still here? Is Jason?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay. Would you like to give a little report?
Um, it's the same as it was last year. It's the, um, same ten streets that we had. But I left Ritter Street in there because I wasn't sure if I should take it out before we're actually, I think we're only like a quarter way through the process of, um, engineering and stuff like that to Ritter Street. So I left it in there.
That's good.
Um, um, so next year we'll pick another street that, uh, we feel is, needs to be, uh, on that list. Um, but still it's, it's the same list that we've had past three years, I think it is. So um, at least we're getting Ritter Street fixed. So that'll be great. Um, the next one, we really need to work on it. I don't know how to do it. I know they tried to do it for the same time as Ritter Street is Old Highway ninety-nine. That street, uh, the highway is so bad. Um, it's in dire needs of something, but hopefully one of these days we can get some grant money or something to fix that. But it doesn't look like we're going to get anything soon. Um, but again, that's all I, I did on the S, uh, six-year street plan is it's the same kind of thing. So um, uh, anybody had any questions or anything about it? Just go ahead and ask me.
No, just a real quick statement. We need to do this on a yearly basis, just in case there is any monies that we can, uh, access to. If we do not have a six-year street plan, we do not have access to any kind of funding at any time. That's why we have to do this. This is housekeeping.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yep, you're correct.
I don't, I don't think this calls for a motion of any kind, but thank you for your report, Troy.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. So we don't have any resolutions. We have ordinance. Yes?
We do have to approve this. We can't just say this is the six-year plan. We have to approve it as council to make official. I, I made the motion, Jason, second.
I thought we did that last year, but okay. All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the six-year street plan as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, so moved. Okay. Okay, we have, uh, no resolutions, but there, we have an ordinance, the first reading of ordinance nine-one-seven. An ordinance of the city of Tannen O relating to the solid waste management, designating the Thurston County Solid Waste System for solid waste originating in the city, adding a new section to chapter eight-point-three-two of the Tannen O Municipal Code. And, uh,
Please, last line, please.
The city of Tannen O City and Thurston County entered into an interno agreement. You said last line, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Hey, the foregoing order, ordinance was adopted by the City Council of the City of Tannen O, Washington, at a regular open public meeting there of the twenty-second day of June twenty-twenty-one.
Well, it hasn't been approved yet because it's just the first reading. So I move approval of the first reading.
Okay.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to, uh, prove the reading of the first reading of the ordinance with, uh, ordinance number nine-one-seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, well, we did the Chamber of Commerce. We did the EDC. I don't think there's anybody here from VCB. Did the Fire District. Library is not here. The museum, I talked about that. Uh, Arch Commission? Nothing? Uh, Civil Service Commission, nothing. And I reported on the, uh, facade grant. I think I shouldn't say, Chief of Police reported, Director of Public Works. I think we're, let's see, Clerk Treasurer reported. The mayor is not here. And that brings us to public comments, number two. If anyone in the audience has a public comment, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address. Hearing then? Anybody have any announcements?
No, not announcements, but I would like to start thinking about, uh, Tannen O's future and some of the socials and social issues that will start coming with the growth that we are expecting to see. Uh, one of the things that I do know is when the city starts to grow, we start getting a lot of homeless people coming down. Uh, I don't want us to get flat, get caught flat-footed about this. I brought this up a few years ago while Dave Waterson was still here. And at that time we were looking at, uh, couch surfers and they were, we were looking at about a rough estimate was pretty close to eighty people that were sharing, you know, a couch here, a couch there, until their welcome ran out. Uh, we're, we're, I don't want us to get flat-footed. So I think what we should do at some time, maybe after all the hubbub of the summer goes away, to, to sit down as a council and, uh, bring some people in that have a little bit more expertise and start thinking about what we could do in the future to not be caught flat-footed and to help some of these people that come down, the ones that actually are looking for help. You know what I mean? Uh, I, it's, I, it's important to me. I deal with these people every day. Uh, uh, all up in North Thurston County and I see them starting to come down here. They don't stay long because we don't have a whole lot of services for them. So they go back to North County or they'll go over to Lewis County or something like that. Uh, but with the growth that we're expected to see, we're going to see that as well. And I don't want it to become a problem. I want it so that we can actually help. So my suggestion is, is that we start thinking about things and then sometime after the summer, uh, maybe late September, sit down as a group and bring somebody with a little bit more expertise in to start putting something together so that we can help. What say you?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Okay. I would say that the meeting is adjourned.
Non-debatable motion.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good one, you guys.